And we have a quorum, so I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order. Will we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, will you please take the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hoagie.
Here.
Ms. Hurd.
Here.
Mr. Carrato.
Here.
Mr. Depp.
Here.
Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
President.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Simpson.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Okay.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item is the minutes. The minutes of the meeting of January 7th, 2014 were presented for review to all the board members prior to today's meeting. Unless there's any board member who requests a reading of those minutes, I will ask, are there any corrections or addition to the minutes as presented? Hearing, having heard no request for a reading of the minutes, nor any corrections or additions, the minutes stand approved as presented. Okay, now we now go to the Finance Committee report. Sharon.
The Finance Personnel and Planning Committees met on January 21st with the Finance Personnel Committee recommending two action items for approval by the Board of Trustees. Action Item Number Two, Resolution Number 2014-2-1, 5307, Capital Assistance Grants. Forty-nine United States Code, USC 5307, authorizes grants to public transit systems in urbanized areas for capital and planning assistance based on formulas used in the statute. Resolution Number 2014-2-1 provides authorization for staff to file a fiscal year 2014 USC 5307 capital assistance application. Bob Rozinski did a thorough job presenting this action item at our committee meeting, and he is available today to answer any questions the board may have. The 2014 Program of Projects is included in today's budget package. As included in today's budget packet is consistent with the RTA Capital Plan. The total federal funding required for these projects is $13,120,000. Based upon the recommendation made at the committee meeting, I move that the Board of Trustees approve Resolution Number 2014-2-1, which provides for the filing of a 49 USC 5307 capital grant application for the RTA Fiscal Year 2014 Program of Projects with the Federal Transit Administration. Furthermore, the motion also authorizes the Executive Director to provide all necessary documents, execute a grant contract, amend the grant contract if deemed necessary, and fulfill all other requirements of the application.
Motion made by Sharon, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Janet. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Any abstention? Action Item Number Two is unanimously approved.
Action Item Number Three, Resolution Number 2014-2-2, 5337 and 5339 Capital Assistance Grants. Forty-nine United States Code, 5337 and 5339 authorize grants to public transit systems in urbanized areas for capital assistance to support and maintain fixed guideway assets, which is 5337, and other capital assets in the state of good repair, 5339. The Greater Dayton RTA can use this funding for the purchase of electric trolley buses, modernization of trolley infrastructure, the capitalization of maintenance costs, and other supporting facilities and equipment projects, as well as to maintain capital assets in the state of good repair. Resolution Number 2014-2-2 provides authorization for staff to file fiscal year 2014 USC 5337 and 5339 capital assistance applications. Bob Rozinski presented this action item at our committee meeting as well, and he is available today to answer any questions the board may have. The 2014 Program of Projects is included in today's board package as consistent, is consistent with the RTA Capital Plan. The total federal funding required for these projects is $11,480,000. Based upon the recommendation made at the committee meeting, I move that the Board of Trustees approve Resolution Number 2014-2-2, which provides for the filing of a 49 USC 5337 and 5339 capital grant applications for the RTA Fiscal Year 2014 Program of Projects with the Federal Transit Administration. Furthermore, the motion will authorize the Executive Director to provide all necessary documents, execute a grant contract, amend the grant contract if deemed necessary, and fulfill all other requirements of the application.
Motion made by Sharon, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Carrato seconds that motion. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Any abstentions? Action Item Number Three is unanimously approved.
A sales tax update. Also at the meeting, Robert Thomas reported that receipts for the month of October 2013 totaled $2.74 million, a very slight decrease of .03% compared to October 2012. Year-to-date receipts, however, after 10 months are up $895,436, or 3.2% as compared to last year. Sales tax trends continue to be very positive. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sharon. Now, are there any questions of Sharon? Hearing none, we'll be moving on then to the Planning Committee report. Janet.
Thank you. As stated earlier, the Finance Personnel and Planning Committees met on January 21st. Although there are no action items from the Planning Committee, we do have a couple of updates to bring forth. Mr. Eckler reported that the January 12th service adjustments were operating quite well. Those highlights of the January changes include Route Number One, service extension to Pentagon Boulevard in Beaver Creek, additional service to the Dayton Early College Academy to address passenger volumes, and a new service extension to the Electric Pack Facility in Miami'sburg. Mr. Eckler also mentioned that staff is currently working with the City of Union and Montgomery County Transportation Improvement District on a service extension to a new development near the Dayton International Airport. Mr. Eckler also provided a summary of the various RTA activities surrounding the Dr. Martin Luther King National Holiday. He also reported that representatives from Imperial College will be attending the April Board Meeting for introductions and a presentation on benchmarking. Regarding our marketing report, Ms. Pritchard also provided an update on the Beaver Creek First Ride Event, the scheduled how-to-write sessions with University of Dayton and Wright State University students, and an update on the kiosk installation at the Northwest Transit Center. Finally, Mr. Owens of the Planning and Marketing Department provided a presentation on the RTA Go Ridership Development Campaign. And this concludes my report, and we are available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Janet. Are there any questions of Janet? Hearing none, we'll move right along. Now, we have the Investment Advisory Committee report, and Sharon, I believe you will be doing that also.
Yes. The Investment Advisory Committee met on January 16th for a very informative session on investments and fuel hedging results and strategy. The financial presentation at the meeting, Ms. Rebecca Leitner opened the financial discussion with the summary of the past year's activities, as January's meeting marks the first anniversary for RTA in working with the Sheerlo Leitner Investment Group and the Caroline Group of Raymond James. Ms. Leitner was pleased to inform attendees that over $30 million is being held and invested by the advisory group. RTA's primary goal of sufficiently increasing investment income has been met with 2013 annual investment income approaching $200,000. The advisory groups are aligned with RTA's core values and have focused on a team approach, having attended over 40 RTA meetings during the past year. Ms. Leitner expressed her gratitude for the opportunity to work with RTA and the Investment Advisory Committee, and concluded that by stating that the advisory groups will continue to add value to RTA over the course of the next two years. Mr. Mike Fink then discussed interest rates, and, as in previous meetings, stated that typically current bond market conditions are reflected in the 10-year Treasury note. The 10-year Treasury note was trading at 2.99%. The five-year Treasury note was trading at 1.74%, and the two-year Treasury note was trading at .41%. This equates to an upward-sloping yield curve. Mr. Fink related Raymond James' forecast of gradual improvement in the economy with interest rates and monetary policy dependent upon inflation and unemployment as the critical considerations. Mr. Fink then discussed USA US aggregate bank reserves, along with a graphical presentation of amounts stockpiled at banks between 2008 and present. Since the latter part of 2008, there's an enormous buildup of cash held at banks. However, we are starting to see a slight reduction in excess bank reserves. The Consumer Price Index, year-over-year, is at 1.7%, which is below the Federal Reserve target of 2%. There are signs of improvement in the labor markets, as approximately 175 new jobs have been created on average this year. However, even though the unemployment rate has currently dropped to 6.8% compared to 7.4% a year ago, due to the reduction in the labor force participation, employment as a percentage of the population has remained virtually unchanged. During 2013, the Federal Reserve purchased $85 billion of bonds every month. During 2014, the Federal Reserve has stated plans to reduce these purchases by $10 billion each month until such time that zero purchases are made. Again, planned reductions will be based on data suggesting improving labor conditions and inflation within the target range. Mr. Lee Sheerlo then discussed an article included in the committee packet about Janet Yellen, the incoming Federal Reserve Chair, to replace Chair Ben Bernanke. Ms. Yellen will be the first person in history to unwind such high levels of monetary accommodation. Although the unemployment rate has declined to 6.8%, the labor participation rate in the market is at a 35-year low. Indicators suggest that the labor market have a long way to go regarding a full economic recovery. The unemployment rate indicates a stronger economy than is actually the case. Mr. Brad Drager reviewed Raymond James' fourth-quarter fixed-income portfolio analysis. Mr. Drager stated that RTA's investment portfolio consists of 59.6% FDIC insured securities. Included are securities of deposit, much of which are non-callable. Federal agency securities represent 40.4% of RTA's portfolio. In contrast, most of the federal agency securities are callable in nature. For reference, RTA's portfolio consisted of the following at December 31st, 2013. Total book value of all investments, including Star Ohio 5/3rd and RJ O'Brien Fuel Futures account, is $39.4 million. Total book value of all investments excluding Star Ohio 5/3rd and RJ O'Brien Fuel Futures account is $30.7 million. The yield to maturity at cost on all investments excluding Star Ohio 5/3rd and RJ O'Brien for Fuel Futures account is 1.03%. The effective maturity and estimated annual income on all investments excluding Star Ohio 5/3rd and RJ O'Brien Fuel Futures account is 2.32 years and $227,473, respectively. Under fuel advisement, Mr. Jeff Lemunyan of Lynnwood Capital presented a diesel fuel price risk management report, including graphical presentations. The following key points were made to the committee. Lower prices during November 2013 allowed the completion of the 2014 hedge. Stronger prices in December 2013 limited the ability to enter into additional hedges. The 2014 hedge grew from 75.31% to 87.99%, and the 2015 hedge remained at 10%. Speculation decreased along the price during November 2013, as inventories grew, and then increased in December 2013 as inventories returned to more normal levels and as demand increased. Opportunity was found to add hedges in late October 2014 and early November 2014, when prices are relatively low. The dollar remained in a relatively low, in a relatively narrow range, having little effect on petroleum prices. Domestic production continues to grow and is currently at a 25-year-high level and represents over 50% of domestic consumption. Expectations are that domestic production will continue to grow, which helps mitigate upward price risk and also depresses prices further into the future. Demand has increased as the economy improves. This will be supportive of price moving forward. The following strategy was recommended by Mr. Lemunyan. Continue to address the first half of 2015 as the market presents the opportunity to do so, avoid buying into high levels of speculation, and seek to avoid hedging at excessive prices while managing risk. Committee members unanimously agreed with Mr. Lemunyan's suggested fuel strategy. And after having said all that, that concludes the report.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Sharon? I would like to add an editorial comment, especially for our viewers at home, just to put all of this in perspective. Some of it you heard me state in the past, but I believe it's important enough to repeat some of the aspects. You've heard that we have 30. First, I want to say, before I get into the numbers, that we're very, very pleased with what our investment advisors are doing to help us maximize the return that we have on our investments. However, we are operating in a very difficult environment because of Ohio Revised Code states there are only certain investments that we can invest in, and they're returning very little and very low interest rates. Sharon reported that our return is 1.03%, but she also reported that the Consumer Price Index is 1.7%. So, in reality, we are actually losing six tenths of a percent on investing our money. If we hadn't invested, we would have lost the entire 1.7%. And so, it's not due to the fact that our investment advisors are failing us in anything. They are doing an outstanding job of trying to maximize that investment. And the second question, I think, that has to be known, you hear $30 million in our reserve. That's certainly a lot of money. But that's a buildup over the years when we needed to replace our bus fleet. Several meetings ago, we mentioned that we're going to replace that fleet over the next several years, and that we're committed to over $100 million to replace that, 80% of which we hope would come from the federal government, and the remaining 20% has to come from that $30 million that we presently have. So, we will see that much of that will be eliminated in the years to come. And if sales tax were to decrease, as we've had our first indication that for one month, although it doesn't make a trend, we do hear of economic difficulties out there, so we watch those numbers very, very carefully, and it's one of the major challenges we have in running the Transit Authority, because so much is dependent on sales tax, and that number has to stay up at a certain level, or we continue to have negative returns. So, I thought that'd be important to mention. I don't know if any other board members want to add anything to what I just said, or correct it, or amplify it. Please feel free to do so. Hearing none, we'll then move on to a presentation on RTA Go-Go. And I think Sabrina, you're going to do that?
I see you have the video teed up. Would it be better to show the video? I'm asking you, I'm not.
Yes.
Would you rather do that first and then go into the... This is not the RTA Go! campaign, you may have noticed. But this morning, we saw the final version of a documentary about our new service extension in Beaver Creek, and I thought before the public saw it, or at least at the same time the public saw it, that the board should get to see it. So, if we could go off agenda, if that's okay with Mr. President?
Please, please.
Well, it's about five-and-a-half-minute video, I think, and my fear is it might disappear in the technology ozone when he puts the other show up there.
We voted against.
In 2009, the Greater Dayton RTA proposed the addition of three bus stops on Pentagon Boulevard and Beaver Creek. Their vision was to provide better access to health care, education, and jobs to RTA riders by adding on to an existing route and extending service to a developing part of the region, one where the current closest bus stop was a mile's walk down a busy road. But despite all this, the Beaver Creek City Council unanimously voted against the RTA's proposal, using a loophole in a city ordinance to block the bus stops. Since then, an activist group called LEED has been working alongside the RTA to ensure that no one is unfairly denied a safe commute. After protests, petitions, marches, and a federal decision wherein Beaver Creek was found in violation of the Civil Rights Act, LEED and RTA were victorious, and four years later, the first bus carrying RTA passengers stopped on Pentagon Boulevard.
You know, it's a great day for our region. It's a great day for citizens in Dayton, Fairborn, Beaver Creek, and the surrounding areas, because no longer do people have to walk across an unsafe overpass unprotected. No longer do Wright State students have to worry about how they get across, whether they own a car or not. It is just a win-win for the entire region.
As the numbers swelled at Wright State University and the job seekers, as there was new building and opportunities out here, there wasn't a way for people who needed work and people who needed transportation to get here. And I think I was in shock in the 20th century that this was still going on.
I couldn't think of how hard it must be to maintain your family and to feed your household and struggling to get to work like that. It is incredible. And what's incredible about it, how dangerous it was. So, it's pretty emotional. We're glad to see that this has been accomplished.
For RTA, it remains, as it always has been, about access to jobs. The first young man that boarded this bus at Wright State was coming over here to go to work this morning, and that's what we've always been about, just trying to give access to jobs to people in the community who are looking for employment, you know, to move themselves to a better place in life.
I'll work here about six days a week, so it means a lot that I don't have to walk to and from that other bus stop. It's a lot.
Walking over that bridge, highly unsafe. So, now for these students at Wright State University, or anybody that's going to walk over that bridge, you don't have to walk over the bridge no more, because now you have this transportation.
Riding the RTA for me as a disabled senior citizen is so liberating. I can go to the doctor anytime, anywhere I need to, and now if my doctor moves to Beaver Creek, I can actually not look for a new doctor. I can actually come to Beaver Creek and follow my old doctor.
Well, I think that it's relief, it's joy, certainly joy, and it brings hope, because it brings hope that other things, if people coalesce, work together, other things can change as well.
RTA's victory has implications far beyond the Dayton region. By winning a federal civil rights case on the grounds of job and education access, the RTA has helped set a precedent that could impact similar public transit cases across the country.
We see this as a victory. We see this as setting a national precedent, because there is no other place in the country where a district or a city has been taken to court, where we filed a federal lawsuit, and the federal government said they had violated the civil rights of people by denying them access to jobs, to education, and other areas of the country are going to follow what LEED has done here in Dayton.
Oh, I'm so happy that this has happened, and I hope that this will be a movement all over the country. We need to open up our suburbs and our malls to the central cities, because that's where the jobs have moved.
Well, I like to think that the legal precedent was back in 1964. It's called the Civil Rights Act. At the same time, yes, I mean, I think you're going to see that the decision by Federal Highway in this case, it will be the model going forward when there are issues about accessibility for public transportation in communities. And, of course, LEED, you know, they're truly champions in this. You know, it's great when a party that understands the process and the need and the fact that we needed people who actually felt the impact of the decision not to let us on Pentagon Boulevard, be the folks out in front on the issue, because that's what brought us to the resolution we have today.
For all the public transit and community leaders involved, the mile-long trip to Pentagon Boulevard was the end of a several-years-long effort, but one that has left everyone reaffirmed in the true mission of the RTA.
We're just overjoyed of the overwhelming support from professors and students at Wright State and churches and just regular community members, children standing out, holding signs and banners, asking people to do the right thing.
I can honestly say that probably never been this emotional driving a bus in the last 38 years, for all of the folks that have been through, and for all the folks at LEED, you know, who took the time and who stuck with the issue for over four years now. There was some sense of relief, but certainly it was a great feeling when we were pulling into that stop and I saw people waiting for the bus.
It's a victory for us, and we should be glad that things have been done to save the people who could not save themselves. It's a victory. We're going to really shout this out.
It's all about job access, educational opportunities for riders. You know, I'm being fairly young in transit. This is a huge project for me, and to see it come to fruition, it kind of reaffirms that purpose and drive of why I got into this business in the first place. So, it's all about moving people, and I think today we scored a major victory in doing that.
Mark, how will this piece be used? How will this piece be used?
Well, that's a good question. I might defer to Sabrina on that. We have been asked by numerous parties to kind of document the entire process. My sense is it'll be available on our website. The federal agencies have asked for something along those lines that they can use for future reference, because there's no question in talking to the folks at the federal level, well, they hope it doesn't have to happen again, but this would be the model and the approach that they would use to address an issue like that. And certainly, we would provide access to the video to the folks at LEED and all of that. I mean, it was an unscripted event, and I can tell you, when we pulled up at Wright State, we knew the bus would be delayed over on Pentagon Boulevard. So, the idea was, we sent the additional bus to Pentagon so that the regular service bus could not be late. We didn't want to hold it up more than 10 minutes, and the driver said, "Yeah, I got all that, but I got a guy over here who needs to get to work. He needs to get on your bus." And I said, "That's wonderful. That's exactly why we're here." And, you know, that just kind of, those who were there remember, it just kind of set the bus off in cheers when they found, "Wow, this young man's been doing this for a couple of years now," and it kind of reminded you of why, you know, why...
And it kind of reminded you of why, you know, why we were involved with this. And the good news is it's just, you know, it's been quiet since then. People are using the service already, and that's a good thing. And we're going to, you know, just move forward from here and hope to never face another one of these issues again.
Mark, I certainly want to commend you and the entire management staff of how professionally you handled this. There was no vindictiveness. There was done with total professionalism. And there's an old saying that I'm very fond of, the cream always has a way of rising to the top. And you've demonstrated that with regard to this particular situation.
I just wanted to add, there's a lot of good communications in our board book from notes from a lot of students who attend Wright State. And I don't know how you weave all of that into something, but that just builds on what you have there. Absolutely creates new access for Wright State students that live on campus especially, who want to connect to jobs over there, you know, or simply make, you know, we actually hope they come to Montgomery County if they want to shop. But if they want to work over there on Pentagon, I'm okay with that. So that is true. And, you know, I've said it before, I'll say it again, I credit our team, most of which is sitting over there. You know, we wanted to get the bus stops in before the worst of the winter. And it looks like we, you know, we got them in in time because it's been the toughest winter I can remember, certainly since I've been here and, you know, probably in 15 years or more here in the community. So I'm glad we got that done because every single time I went out to check on progress, without exception, either coming or going, there was somebody making that trip without sidewalks across those bridges. And that just kept reaffirming to me. And I'd come back and I'd call Bob Rosinsky and say, "Where are my bus stops?" So, you know, we... So it, I think, I mean, personally, it's, I'm glad it's behind us at this point. But I think it was good that we, you know, document for the record, you know, how the event went and all that.
Can you let the board know, I'm assuming you're going to upload the video on YouTube?
Yes, we have the RTA YouTube channel, so we'll have it uploaded on that channel.
Can you alert the board when that video's available? Then we can all kind of push it out through our own networks to help get the word out?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Excellent idea, Sharon. Thank you.
And I just also want to give a round to Ruth Davis of BH Productions. You know him well. He was the film director for that documentary. And just in a quick aside, he just alerted me that we won gold place for last year's Video Award. And so that was pretty exciting. We worked against thousands internationally. And so with his direction and his help, we won the gold award for that as well.
All right. Good.
It was awesome.
Take camera to yourself.
Yeah. You may have noticed in the video that he captured Channel 7's camera person on the bus. And I had an interesting conversation with him because he works third shift. We were out there pretty early. And he said, "You know, I pretty much just get to do house fires."
Car ride.
And he said, "This human interest story was a lot of fun." And he really, he rode around with us, and he really enjoyed the ride as well. So that was good.
Wonderful. Any other comments? Well, then, moving right along, I guess, are we then going to get into the RTA Go presentation?
Yes. The RTA Go campaign is the overall marketing campaign for RTA. All of our events, programs, and projects and communications will actually be coming through that campaign. What you will find is really, I think, a very integrated campaign that really speaks to what we are about, and that is going to getting our customers to work, to educational facilities, but also great destinations in and around Montgomery County. And so we'll have Nathan Owens, who is our ridership developer, actually give you a preview of it.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Afternoon.
Are you able to see? I want to make sure.
Yes.
Presentation. But yes, this is the RTA Go campaign. It's going to be our umbrella ridership campaign for 2014. And today, I'm going to give you just a little taste of what that's going to be. Maybe. Like Sabrina said, this is really just an umbrella ridership campaign. It's going to really encompass all that we do in 2014. What's great about it is we're able to target different ridership groups and potential riders that are out there that may not be aware of our services. And what's kind of great about the RTA Go campaign, it really encompasses all that we do. It's RTA Go. We're, you know, we're on the go. We're providing transportation to jobs, education, you know, just to play, to shop. We're going to be launching, it's going to be this month, so you're getting a taste of it before it hits the streets. And again, this is, what's really nice about this is super flexible, that we can really gear it towards different targeted groups, counties. Our overall goal with this is hopes to increase ridership by 2%. And with this campaign, we're hoping to do that. And we're going to do that in a lot of different ways. We're going to do it with a lot of our traditional advertising, but then also we're going to try some non-traditional type marketing and advertising, like disruptive mediums, and you'll see an example of that. So this right here is your logo for the RTA Go campaign, RTA Go Ride. Again, I kind of touched on about all that we do as a transportation service. RTA Go shop, work, play, learn. It's all that we can do, we do for the county and the potential customers. This is an example of route-specific handout card. This here, I don't know how well you can see the screen, but this is for Route 34 as an example here and what we're going to target first. This really highlights what we do along that route. And that's really great for a lot of new potential riders who may not be aware of the route that goes right in their backyard, where it's going. So this, we can highlight the map. We can show, hey, this is Route 34. This runs from Miller Lane all the way out to Northwest Transit Center. You have Walmart, you have Harrah Arena, you have, you know, Restaurant Row on Miller Lane. So there's a lot to do out there. And this is, you see, on the front there is a little QR code. And that code, what they scan any of the materials out there, that will take them directly to our RTA Go microsite. And this is an example, kind of carries on that, this is a lot of the posters that you would be seeing out in the transit centers. And also, we have greater partnerships with the universities that will continue to get those posters out there. But we also want to get out there more with some of the retailers and the different municipality buildings. And again, what's fun about this, we have our shop-play-work-learn, and we can really rotate those images and those posters. And we're also going to get out there in community papers, you know, the Dayton Daily News community paper. This is an example shot of that. And again, with the QR code, to try to push them towards that microsite. And we're also going to take advantage of our e-blast. I know a lot of people here are signed up for the RTA My Alerts. You can sign up to get onto this e-blast, and we're going to really be able to get those communications out there to those individuals as well. And we also want to do a little more web advertising. This is an example of some of our web banners. And those at times can be a little disruptive as well. I know many of you have been on DaytonDailyNews.com, and that banner drops down in front of you, and you have to search for that X to get out of it. But we're hoping that's going to give them time to look at those, you know, kind of eye-catching campaign images. And those all also take them, again, directly to our microsite. We also want to use our assets. We have these great billboards that are driving around Montgomery County and Green County that we want to utilize our buses. So we can use our sides of our buses and the back of our buses. So we'll be seeing that campaign out there as well. And this is an example of some disruptive marketing, disruptive medium here. This is called projection bombing. It's this kind of fun. This is, I don't know if you can tell with the dark picture, that's Mendelson's Building right downtown here in the background. And what it is, it's kind of like the bat signal. It'll take our RTA Go campaign and just shoot it right onto the building. So what's great about this is you could be at the Dayton Dragons game, you have 8,000 people there for nine innings staring at our logo, at our image. And what it is, is basically just a van with a projector inside of the van that shoots it up onto the building. So we really want to take advantage of this and get that out there within Montgomery This is just a highlight. This is kind of whatever we've kind of gone into. Sabrina touched on it a little as well. And we're going to really hit the advertising through our print, our web, and also radio and TV, and also with Facebook and Twitter, our social media. And we're going to be launching our social media campaign along with this at the same time, where we're going to do, just to let you know, a little selfie campaign. That's the 2013 Webster Dictionary Word of the Year. Those who aren't familiar, selfies, just you take your camera, take your picture of yourself, and upload it onto RTA's Facebook page. And we can really have fun with that, become engaging. And also, with that campaign, we can target, say, Route 34. We'll have our riders, potential riders, get on Route 34, take a selfie, post it on our Facebook page, tag their friends, say, "Wish you were here on 34 with me." And that way, we'll also grow our network on social media. And this is just an example of things that we would do to get the message out. We would typically have about 100 posters, 5,000 of those take-one cards to get out there on the transit centers and the buses, and also those different municipalities. And also, we'll have, again, our bus fleet, we're going to take advantage of that as well. And with that, if you have any questions, we would be able to answer those for you today.
Nathan, with the slide that showed the Go campaign projected on Mendelson's Building, that one?
Yes.
Do we ask permission for that, or is...
Yes, yeah, we would have to.
I would think so.
But it is on wheels, so we could take off pretty quickly.
Ask for forgiveness.
When we first saw that, I was imagining, you know, my phone call from Sandy Mendelson.
Any other questions? Well, it's exciting. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Mark, I believe we now have the executive director's report.
Great. Just a couple of things to report outside of what's in your packet today. Just a heads up that at the joint committee meeting on the 18th, we will be providing an update on the dual-mode project and where that stands. And we'll hope to unveil the look of the new bus and all of that, and give the board a sense of where we're at and what the timeline looks like, and some of the oddities and issues we've run into, and how we're dealing with all of that and making this work. So that's coming on the 18th. Also, I want to give you a heads up. We talked a little bit during the budget process, and I think a little more a couple months before that, about our partnership with the city of Dayton, the Downtown Dayton Partnership, MVRPC, and a number of other entities on the proposed bike-share operation for here in Dayton, Ohio. We've been looking for and may have identified a method to move the funding up to an earlier year, and we're doing everything in our power, us being Bob, to help expedite that, if we can get it done, to do the capital procurement as early as the current year, which would hopefully mean the rollout of the actual program could be as early as spring 2015. So, you know, we'll be the primary partners in the operation once it's up and running. The city's committed to, you know, the local match issues, so it's moving along, hopefully quicker than we thought. And just in case something, you know, comes out before too long, I wanted you to be aware that we think we're in pretty good shape. We're ready to go. We really are on that project. I did want to talk a little bit about the weather. You know, we have had a rough winter here. We've had a real winter here, I would say. Like, you know, I keep telling people, it's like, this is winter I remember when I was a kid growing up in Youngstown, you know, when, you know, things got cold, stayed cold, things froze and stayed frozen. So we've had some challenges. Our people have dealt with it in a great way. We ran out of salt at one point. We were up to about three times the salt we typically would consume in a year we've already consumed. So, you know, we're doing what we can, but the weather is the weather. You know, we're going to be committed to staying out there. Obviously, it's cost us a little bit on the expense side because of the salt and the overtime issues, but our team is doing a great job. The only downside is with the extreme cold, you know, I haven't seen the numbers yet, but I've been noticing very light loads on the extreme cold days. So a lot of effort's gone into place. Hopefully, we picked up some new people, but I can tell you, quite a few people, especially the elderly, were staying home during the extreme cold. So we'll see what happens. I understand that the Farmer's Almanac says February worse than January, and so far, it's been right this year. Congratulations, Linda Eckler. Shout out for Linda on that. But that could mean that, you know, we've got a few more rough weeks ahead of us, but I can tell you, our team is ready, and we'll do what we can to get through it. And with that, unless there are questions, that's all I have to report.
Mark, you may want to, for our listeners at home, explain what dual-mode, what you meant by the dual-mode.
Yes. Well, thank you, Franz. It's one of our favorite subjects this week. Dual-mode is the idea that we would have a bus, you know, initially, our intent was to go out to find a replacement vehicle for our trolley bus fleet. It's getting to that age where it needs to be retired, kind of like me, you know, other people think I need to be retired. But when we started looking into this, we looked at the possibility of what we consider a dual-mode or dual-powered operating bus, in which it would be able to operate on our existing wire. We have 124 miles of directional wire in the city of Dayton, which makes us probably the largest fixed highway operation in the state of Ohio, and one of the larger ones in the nation, actually. And the thought was, could we expand the use of that by buying a bus that would operate on the wire, to the end of the wire, and then operate off the wire into the suburbs and back? And the plan is that we will have two types of dual-mode prototype buses to try. The first will be diesel-electric hybrid version, which is very similar to the hybrid bus we operate today, only it would have a pole set so it could run, you know, all-electric on-wire and then operate as a hybrid off-wire. The second one, and if I had to have a favorite today, my personal favorite would be the all-electric. It's an all-electric bus that will be able to operate up to 15 miles off-wire with a full load capacity and at normal operating speeds, which would be a totally different experience from what we have in our current fleet. And, you know, we've committed to a test period of the two vehicles, not only against each other, but against the rest of the fleet, to see what the potential really is, and eventually do the benefit-cost analysis to see, one, what's the best bus to replace the existing trolley fleet? And then going forward, is there potential to replace, in the longer term, some of the diesel fleet or all of the diesel fleet with these? I mean, the actual, you know, the greatest expectation or anticipation would be the answer to the question, could we go all-electric, you know, and eliminate our need for Linwood Capital and our investments in, ongoing investment in diesel fuel in the futures? That would be an exciting possibility for us. So, you know, this year, we hope to get this program on the, literally on the street, and start the test period. And I'll just give a little hint that the bus is going to look totally different than any bus we have, and that's intentional. We want the public to know what we're doing, and we're going to do a lot of advertising that has to do with why the bus is out there, what we're experimenting with, and why it's great for the community. It's a great, great project for our community, and we can't wait to get it started.
Great, Mark. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I don't think there's any old business to come before the board. Is there any new business to come before the board? Now, we have public comments. Do we have a portable mic?
We do.
We do. Great. And Ms. Mothers, I believe you're first to speak. I know you understand the rules of what we have, but just again, for the listeners at home, I think I'd like to repeat all those things. Each public person making a comment has three minutes to make his or her comment. They get before the microphone. They have to state their name and address. They then could make their presentation, at which time the clock starts. When there's 15 and a half a minute left in the presentation, there is a yellow light that goes on that tells you you're coming close to your three-minute presentation. So with that, let me turn it over to you, Ms. Mothers.
My name is Sandra Mason Mothers, Assistant Member of Montgomery County. And I'm here today to address something, this class, luggage truck. I received two phone calls over the weekend from two people that I went to class with at the Mountain Valley Leadership Council. And I talked with them. One told me that we're getting confused with these bus routes that you have started, got buses changing here from two to one, or four to two. It don't make sense. You shouldn't do that. Because you got people that memorizes the bus. I've been down in Groves, so I don't. They memorize it so they'll know what bus to catch, going and coming, even going and coming to work or school. We no longer have the Mountain Valley Leadership Council, it's closed up and due to public. So that's what I'm here to let you know about. Also, you need to hire some drivers on private mobility. It's ridiculous again. And this morning, we had a heavy load on the St. East track. From my house to Central to Grand Avenue, it was full. From my house to Central to Grand Avenue, it was cool. We got up to Brookview, we only could transport up to five, because of the traffic. They had to call the two buses, a bus to pick up in Brookview, and then a bus to pick up at Kroger's. So, I think during the first two months, we need to put that second bus back on, out there on the Easy Ride that you took off.
That's great news, that we're carrying big loads on Easy Ride. It hasn't, in the past, not been one of our most productive routes. So, I'll ask Frank to take a look at the ridership numbers on there, and we'll talk to operator Cynthia and see what's happening. That's good news. And we'll get with you after the meeting. I'm not sure I understand the first concern, but we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you, Ms. Mothers. The second person is Ms. O'Brien.
I'm here again about the steps on the bus. Not the ramp, but the steps going from the front of the bus to the back of the bus. Somebody is going to fall, and it's going to be, they'll end up in a nursing home. You may end up being sued. Something has to be done about those steps. And this is not the first time I've said it, this is the third time I've said it. I'm afraid somebody is going to fall, and it's going to be a permanent injury. After all, we're not 16 anymore. I wish you'd send some Project Mobility drivers that are young and can't run too fast. But this is a problem, and it makes me very concerned that somebody is going to fall. My aunt lived to be 97, and the only thing that killed her is she rode the CTA and fell on a CTA bus and broke both hips. I don't want to see that happen here. If the steps were smaller, if they weren't so high, that is a problem. They're too steep. And I hear complaints about it at Brookview time and time again. I'm sorry, I hate to say that, but, you know, something has to be done before somebody really gets hurt.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien.
I would just respond to that, that, you know, we spent a million and a half dollars on the four buses that we operate in Easy Ride. There really is not a platform today that I'm aware of, of a bus, that does, the steps are there because of the low floor in the front of the bus. And we eliminated the steps in the front of the bus because we felt that would be easier for people to board, and the industry has gone to building primarily that style of bus. The problem with that is, when you get to the back of the bus, that's where the engine and the transmission and the rear axle are, so that floor must be elevated to accommodate the powertrain of the bus.
I'm afraid somebody is going to fall.
And we are, too. And in your specific case, ma'am, I know we recommended that you consider using Project Mobility instead of going on Easy Ride if it's that great a concern for you, because there is no way to alter that specific bus. And we did order those buses, you know, originally, our intent was to go with a 40-foot bus on Easy Ride because of the crowding, but we couldn't get the 40-foot bus into places like the McDaniel Street Apartments, I think are an excellent example. So, our staff talked me into ordering the 430-foot buses, which are the buses we use today in that service. And until there's a new design, the problem is, if it's a diesel bus, you've got to accommodate that engine, and the only way to do that is to have a higher floor in the rear end of the bus. So, that's a challenge for us. And I think on a case-by-case basis, we may want to encourage people, if they have some mobility issues, that we consider the use of a Project Mobility grocery trip in that case, because we provide those all the time.
And I have one more thing. Project Mobility, when you call for a bus, for Project Mobility, sometimes they'll ask if you have a wheelchair. Sometimes they won't ask you anything. Now, the bit of it is, an electric wheelchair takes more room than a standard wheelchair. This roller takes more room than a standard walker. They should ask you what your use. We had somebody with two wheelchairs, a walker, a roller, come on with a scooter. If there had been an accident, somebody would have gotten very seriously hurt. And I, again, you know, I've been in law for too many years. Again, it's a lawsuit.
I do...
I'm trying to be nice.
Okay. We appreciate that.
I've been in law for 40 years. I was a legal assistant, and I'm afraid of, you'll get a good lawsuit.
And we share your fears, I believe. When a person is certified-eligible, the mobility device issue should be included, so that when you call and make a reservation, what they see on the screen should identify for our person already what your device is. Now, if some are asking, that's an added step that they typically don't need to do, because it's actually on the computer screen when they make that. Now, we can look into every bit of that, and we'll double-check to make sure in your case that your mobility device is listed, but we are very careful about that, because we don't want to litigate either, and, but that should be in there. It should have been in there in the, that's something we learn in the certification process, because when you give your name, that brings up your origin, address information, the assistive devices, and all of that should be on the screen that goes into the scheduling.
And by the way, I'm laughing about the weather, because they're saying, what, four or five inches? I lived in Battle Creek, where one day they told us snow plurries, and when I left work, it was above my waist.
Let's hope we don't have that here.
I hope not.
We're not very good at that below the, what we call the equator, Interstate 70 here.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Next presenter is Ms. Mercer. State your name and address.
My name is Jewel Mercer. I also live in Brookview Place. I've only been there just a little over a year. I have some serious health problems concerning walking, standing for any period of time. So, after trying to climb the hill with 13 steps plus level spaces and no amrails, and snow and ice and everything else, I applied for Project Mobility. They make it almost impossible to be approved for Project Mobility. I got a statement from my doctor that I have a degenerative back disease, I have osteoporosis, I have arthritis, and I have nerve damage in my back, which prevents me from standing longer than seven to 10 minutes without severe pain. They turned me down on Project Mobility, said that I was capable of walking to the fixed route. They said, "I don't mind riding the fixed route. I can't get to and from the fixed route. So, if you can get me to the fixed route, I will gladly ride it." But so finally, after an appeal and going back through my doctor, my eye doctor, which I did not get good news from, they approved me for a temporary unconditional program. But I have to go back to the end of April and re-qualify for the whole shoot and bang again. They won't, I have to pay to go back to my doctor and get a statement from him, which he will have to tell you the same thing is on my record already. And I think it's a total waste of my time, my money, your time and your money, when you could go ahead and just approve it for the people that use the Project Mobility to ride to work. I'm 81 years old, and I can't just walk anywhere I need to go. And I also have just one comment to make on the grocery bus, as we refer to it. We had the project the other day about the ice. We had to get off at one end and walk all the way to the other end of Kroger's. Then, when she come back, she wouldn't stop over there and pick us up. She went back to the bus stop. We had to walk back through the street on the ice to get up there, to get back on the bus. She said she was not allowed to stop anywhere other than the bus stop. And I think in a situation like this, or the one we may have Thursday, there should be compensation made for her to be able to stop 50 feet farther back in order to get us old people back on the bus. We can't carry our groceries that far. And the door to her store was broken, and we could not get in that end.
Just a couple of quick things. On the second one, the young lady next to you would tell you that, you know, you have to be careful, if you want to avoid litigation, where you stop buses and let people on and off. That could be a property, private property issue, but after the meeting, I'll ask Allison to check which Krogers, and we can certainly reach out to them and see if we can get their permission. We need their permission, if it's on private property, before we can do that. And just for the board's benefit, before the meeting, I made the commitment to Ms. Mercer that I would look at her application to make sure that they understood, when they did the certification process, what the walk was, and there was clarity there. If they just thought it was, because that's not a long distance, but it's uphill, and there's steps and all of that, and we'll double-check on all that to see if, you know, if something can be done there.
A situation at Kroger's, it's a public driveway that comes off of one street, goes onto another street area. The bus and the area that drives through it. The Project Mobility bus stops there. The fire truck stops there to shuffle groceries. The beer people deliver stuff in flowers and stuff. We had four people to get on the bus. We were waiting there for her, and she would stop where she told us to go back to, to get inside, so we stopped there. There was only four people there, which would have taken a total of less than four minutes to get on the bus and start promoting.
It does, just so you understand, doesn't have anything to do with the time, and she was doing her job. She's instructed where she's allowed to stop at these different locations, and without our permission, she can't stop anywhere else. And depending on the owners of the private property, you know, sometimes they will say to us, we just had one come up today, where they say, "A Project Mobility vehicle can come to the front door," I believe it was Meyer, one of the Meyer stores, but the big buses cannot. The big buses are stopping at a designated stop, and it has to do with the thickness of the pavement and the big bus being so much heavier. So, we'll definitely look at it once we know which Kroger we're talking about, but it may require Kroger's permission for us to do that. And if we let a customer off in an unauthorized location, then we're facing that litigation that everybody worries about, because then we've acted outside the scope of our responsibilities, and the attorneys down there would say, you know, "Don't do that." So, we'll look at it, we'll find out which Kroger, and we'll approve it.
Yeah, we have people that ride that bus, that four trips a week, and it makes up there. I think Krogers would gladly give us a four-minute buy, just to keep the customers.
We absolutely would hope so, but you might be surprised. I think Walmart being the best example of, it's, we just, we can't get through certain firms in terms of access like that, but we'll try. Yeah, okay.
I have another statement. I usually send in for my Project Mobility rides, but since the bus goes to Meyers and Kroger's, isn't there some way that we can buy those tickets at Meyers or Kroger's?
We have 100, approximately 100, Mary can correct me if I'm wrong, different sales outlets for tickets and passes. Not all will sell Project Mobility tickets, some refuse to. You know, we can find out which one's closest for you. I don't know that we do with Meyer, that doesn't ring a bell, but it is up to them, because there's nothing in it for them to sell those. We are also moving toward, we hope, in the near future, Allison's wanted it for years, and to take care of payment electronically, so it doesn't have to be done with the little tickets, or even on the bus, so that it could be done...
I have here today.
I wish it was yesterday, but that's our goal in the long run, is that, especially for Project Mobility, it could all be done electronically, not only fair payment, but even requesting a trip, that it could all be done.
I have some place in here today to get some...
Oh, sure. We can get you some before you leave today, absolutely, sure.
Okay, I'm going to sort of cut this conversation off and really leave it to the end of the meeting where you could have it. There is a certain protocol that we set, that we should be following. We had a relatively short program today, and I made an exception today, but we have to be careful that we don't break the protocol that has been established for a long period of time. Some of the questions that you have, were they questions?
Somebody did, because my daughter called me. She had this work from one of my doctors, and I had no problem changing her date on the pickup in Project Mobility. And whoever woman I talked to, she needs a good pat on the back.
Great. Well, we'll end the conversation with that compliment. We appreciate the compliments that you gave us very much. Thank you very much. If you have any additional thoughts and want to meet with the staff after the meeting today, please feel free to do that. Okay. Moving on to the item number 11 on our agenda, are there any board members' comments or announcements? No, then there's no need for us to go into executive session, that I know of. Then I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So, move. Second.
Okay. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Good, good. Thank you. All right. Thank you.